I'm going to call the Goffstown School Board meeting to order at 7 o'clock. If you can all join me in the pledge.
For allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, well, welcome back, everybody. I hope everyone had a nice summer. So we're going to start with correspondence.
Just a couple of things today. We have, we have an agreement. It's actually an addendum that we entered into with the Manchester School District. This has to do with our robotics program. So that was in the works for quite some time. And the second thing that I'm providing in the correspondence folder, the board is aware that I've had a number of requirements to sign off on Title VI, and there have been a number of kind of requirements that we've had. This is the most recent one. So this is a sign off, a certified report, that we don't have any DEI-related activities going on. So this is not due until September with the department. It's due the first week of September, I believe. I sent it in two and a half weeks ago or so. At this point, I think that there's a class action suit against this, so we don't know if we're going to have to do it or not, but I already signed it, and it's in the correspondence folder.
All right, awesome, thank you. All right, good news. Hi, Brady, welcome back.
Thank you. Not too much happening at the high school right now, at least that I know of. We haven't really started the school year yet, but we do have that beginning of year stuff going on, especially with athletics. Lots of our teams have started meeting, practicing, having scrimmages. And additionally, the student council is preparing for the start of their year, and kind of just the events that we run on the first day. That's about it.
Nice, thank you. Anyone else? Go ahead, Wendy. Oh, right, Wendy. Do you have accommodations?
Yes, one more thing. Congratulations to Derek Davis, who's a 7th grade social science teacher over at Mountainview, and is also our teacher rep from Mountainview. He has been nominated for New Hampshire Science Teacher of the Year. So he will be going to a big presentation in October. We wish him the best of luck, and regardless of what happens, we're really fortunate to have Derek. So congratulations to Derek just for being nominated.
Great, thank you, Wendy. Anyone else? Accommodations? Go ahead, Jenny.
I have two accommodations, and that is, I went to Frog and Toad, the musical, this summer, and it was awesome. They had the cutest costumes. I absolutely loved them. And so did my granddaughter, who came with us. And they also did the Little House of Horrors also, when both of them were very well done. I'd also like to ask for a moment of silence. A longtime teacher of ours, Edwin Walker, Butch Walker, passed away this summer. He was a business teacher in Goffstown for many, many years. And he actually was the teacher who brought computers, worked with our first computers when they came to Goffstown. He also was very involved with golf, and was a golf coach, and did golf everything for many, many years with kids in Goffstown. So if we could have a moment of silence. He also was the husband of Jean Walker, who was an educator in Goffstown, 2nd grade teacher for many, many years. I know my three kids all had Jean, and she was wonderful, so...
Jean is still doing the ski program.
Yes.
I think she's been doing it for five decades.
Yes. My kids all had Jean in the ski program also.
That's pretty cool.
So if we could have a moment of silence for them.
All right, thank you, Jenny. Is there anyone else that has accommodations? Good news? Oh, go ahead, Rheta.
This summer, on August 5th, there was a national night out celebration in the back, back of the school? Back of the school? Not sure which direction. It was a lot of fun, a lot of kids. I'll talk a little bit more later about our booth that we had there, but the helicopter was pretty amazing. All the kids got to go in, and of course, lots of food and candy. I think the kids had a really great time, and it was fun.
And it was a nice night?
Yes.
Thank you, Rheta. Anyone else? All right, moving on to public comment. Is there any public comment tonight? All right, seeing none. So we're going to approve the June 16th and August 4th school board meeting and retreat. So we'll start with the June 16th. Anybody see anything? I'll need a motion.
I make a motion to approve the August 16th?
June 16th.
I'm sorry, June 16th. Too far away.
Yeah.
Minutes.
All right, do I have a second?
I'll second.
By Rheta, sorry, I saw Rheta first. Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Brady? Yes? Opposed? Abstaining? We're unanimous. And then the August 4th retreat. I'll need a motion for that.
I'll make a motion that we approve the August 4th board meeting minutes as presented.
All right, thank you, Jack. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
By Vanessa. Any further? Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, just a quick question. This isn't the retreat.
Yeah, it's not the retreat.
It's just a regular board meeting, right?
Oh, okay. I was looking at the retreat. Oh, June 16th was the retreat. August 4th was the other meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Brady? Yes? Opposed? Abstaining? One abstention is Jared. Denise, did you get that?
Yep.
All right, so we have a presentation from our Fed Director. Do you want to come on up?
Yeah, so we'll welcome Jennifer Freitas to come up to the microphone. I'll give a little bit of an introduction while Jen is coming up. So we're required to have what's called a special education local plan. And by and large, the majority of the content is set forth by the state, but boards have to adopt the procedures. And it's been about four years since we've made any changes to the local plan. And Jen is here because we have a number of things that we need to update. It's a pretty short list, but that's what she's here for. And I've also asked Jennifer to speak a little bit about program approval, which is something that is coming to Goffstown this year. So with that, Mrs. Freitas.
Hi, welcome.
Very minimal changes to our local plan in light of the PAGS process. We just wanted to be sure it was up to date. First thing we did was update...
PAGS is program approval and monitoring?
Yep. And I'm going to give you a little blurb on that in a second, so you'll get to hear a lot about that. But we've updated the names of our current staff. I think we had some staff that were no longer with the district on our previous manual. Like we said, it's been a few years, so those have all been updated. Throughout the manual, we've updated the maximum age for services from 21 to 22, which is in line with the New Hampshire rules. The next thing we updated was the, just the confidentiality of information section, and that's our retention and destruction of special ed files. And we updated that just to be in line with our district policy, since it has been a while. So that was done. And the last piece of this is an important piece for the PAGS process. It's the addressing the needs of children with disabilities enrolled by their parents in approved private nonprofit schools. Currently, there are no approved private nonprofit schools in Goffstown, but we need to have a procedure in case one did open. The Villa Augustina used to be, I think, your only, it was the only place, and it's closed down. But in the event that one did open up again, we need to have a process for, a child find process, how we're going to locate these kids, how we're going to assess them. Something, you know, that's not necessarily common knowledge about that is when you have an approved private school in your district, students from other towns or cities come into that school, and because that school is geographically located in Goffstown, those become our children, and the child find piece and whatever service provision, which is looks different from an IEP, we're responsible for. They appear in our special ed system. We receive actually the IDEA funding piece for those students. But again, currently, we don't have any in our district. So those were the updates to the manual, and we're here tonight seeking approval just for those updates. And the PAGS process, one of those special ed acronyms that everybody hears all the time, but basically, yep, it's program approval and general supervision. And it happens every six years, and I don't know if people are familiar, in the olden days, they used to have something called an onsite process, where they would come in, representatives or contractors from the Department of Ed, and come into your district and look at your programs, and pull files, and read through them, and look at your IEPs, and your written prior notices, and look at your programs. Well, the process has been really refined over the years, so it's a six-year cycle. And we are in the C1 cohort, which starts this fall. And basically, what the Department of Ed is going to be looking at are, first of all, a special education program presentation. We're going to provide them with an organizational chart, a personnel list of our special ed staff, what our programs are in each building, what they look like. For the next part, we're going to, they're going to look at our performance indicators, like through a data probe, and that's on the data dashboard on the department website. And they're just things like, for instance, today we had information on indicator 11, which is initial evaluations, and do we do them in a timely fashion? And that all goes on to that data dashboard. So they're going to be looking at those pieces. They'll look at our educational environments. That means the special ed programs that were approved for in the district. So each school has different approved programs. They might have a resource room, a self-contained. The preschool has early childhood environments that are a little different. So they're going to look at our programs, the quality of those programs, are we in compliance in implementing those programs? The next piece is what I talked about, the equitable services review. That's a big piece of this PAGS process. They want to be sure that we're finding all children that may be children in need of special education services. Student file reviews. They're going to take a sample of 5% of each of the identified children in each school. So it equates some schools, a smaller school, it might be two files. Larger schools, like the high school, it could be eight files. And this is a virtual review. It's not a come-in, pull-out-the-brown-file-and-go-through. It's an onsite, they go into the NESSUS system, and they look for, at the IEPs, they look at the documents we've uploaded. Can we prove that we've provided service? Are there service logs? Are there meeting, you know, the evaluations happening on time? These are all things that they look at in the NESSUS system, so they'll be poking in on these kids and checking those out. But again, they won't be in district for that. That will be virtual. The fiscal and financial profile is just how we spend our grant. Do we submit it in a timely fashion? Do we spend it appropriately? Do we spend it all? Are we giving money back? I can tell you that we do not give money back. Sometimes there's like a 13-cent balance, and we even look for something for 13 cents. We usually can't find it, but it, you know. I have a very talented person in my office who will find something for 13 cents. They're going to come into one of our schools and do a classroom observation. So I'm not sure what school that is yet. We'll find out as time goes by. And then there's going to be a family and caregiver listening session, and that's going to be virtual. It's going to take place on December 11th between 6:00 and 7:00 o'clock, and they're going to give us material so that we can get that information out to parents, and they can sign up virtually. I think there'll be a QR code or other ways to sign out if they don't have access to sign up like that. And it's very structured questions that they're going to ask parents about. So, and then they'll let us know that feedback. And then there'll be a staff survey. So all of our special education staff will receive a survey as well, and there'll be confidential surveys that they can fill out to provide their feedback. We're really, this is a collaborative process with the department, and we're very happy to be doing this. We're really looking forward to the feedback and... Are there things we can do to improve? I'm going to say we have an outstanding special education staff, great facilitators, great special education teachers and staff. I think we do a really good job, but there's always room for improvement, so we're looking forward to any feedback and just having, number one, showing off a little bit, but also, two, how can we serve students with disabilities more? What more can we do? And so we're just very excited, and there'll be more to come on that as the process unfolds.
Awesome. Thank you, Jen. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
So, yeah, I was just, thank you, Heather. I was just going to share, so in preparation for this PAGS visit that's happening this year, we need to adopt the new local plan. However, before we do, I like to point out unfunded mandates. Here's a big one. So federal special ed entitlement is from age 3 to 21. The state of New Hampshire has adopted 3 to 22. So that's an entire year. And remember, we have kids that cost well over $100,000. So great for families, great for kids, but it comes with no costs associated with it. We don't even get our full special education aid that we're entitled to on the students who qualify. So I appreciate the work that Jennifer has done for this, and we need to approve the plan, but again, this is a big unfunded mandate that I just want the board to be aware of.
Go ahead, Jenny.
Ryan, was that done because there's so few services for disabled people?
Adult services?
Yes.
I'm not entirely sure what the rationale was, but one of the things that has frustrated me my entire career is the lack of adult services. So we work so hard to support children with disabilities throughout their time in the school district, and then when they age 21, many of these kids don't have funding associated with them. They can end up on a wait list, they can not get services. So I think that's likely a part of it. And again, it's a good thing for kids, and it's a good thing for families, but there's no corresponding revenue for the school district. So you just have to be aware of that.
Rheta?
Yeah, and it was, I was going to ask that question myself. Do you keep track of how much money, that additional money that we have to pay for that extra year?
We have not, and we could. I think I would say, I don't know that the state is too concerned about it. They certainly recognize that this is an unfunded mandate in the state. That's well-known.
And I appreciate the fact that it's good, it's good for the students, but it's expensive for the school districts.
No doubt.
Jared?
Thank you. Yeah, the age 22, that passed a couple of years ago, up to that age.
Yeah.
So that is somewhat recent. My question is about the virtual reviews that are being done. Are any of the students' CY information being redacted during those? Are we able to see names, dates of birth, things like that through the screens?
No, the information that, they assign the students something called, and forgive me, I think it's an IPM or an IMP number, so it's just a number for the student. It's not any of their person...
So they won't be able to see that personal information of the student?
The DOE can see the IEP of the student. They can see the personal information of the student, but any correspondence about the students with us, or information sent back and forth electronically, if there's a number, a code, like, and, so it might be like student number 13.
Okay.
And that's all it will be. I know who it is, but other people, nobody would be able to associate it with the student.
Thank you very much.
Good question, Jared. Jenny, you had your hand up again?
Yeah, I think it's sad that they, the state has added this extra year for kids to be in school, but I know with a lot of the kids that I took care of, when they got to, you know, 21-year, all of a sudden, they were dropped, and their moms would be scurrying around trying to find programs for them, and there were limited, very limited amounts of them. And they were just at home with a nurse's aide after that, with no backups at all. So all they've done was send them to school for another year, and they still, at the state level, haven't worked on programs for people this age, at the state level, for them to get any kind of services. So, I mean, this extra year is great for kids, but it doesn't help them in the long run.
Thank you, Jenny. Anyone else? So we need a motion.
Please.
Motion to approve the revised special education procedures plan as presented.
Thank you, Jared. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
By Vanessa. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Brady?
Yes?
Opposed? Abstaining? We're unanimous. Thank you, Jennifer. Appreciate you coming tonight.
And please go home.
Yes. All right, so we're moving on to our committee reports. So finance reports, we have quite a few manifests.
All right, so bear with me as I get my finance legs back at the beginning of the year here. So we are going to be looking at the manifest for May 29th through June 30th of 2025. The total amount is $6,733,867.24. A majority of that, or, sorry, not a majority, maybe a majority, sorry, is the payroll, taxes, and benefits. And this is due to staff receiving their balloon payments for the summer. A total for that category is $5,626,558.83. The next category is special ed activity. We had some in-district and out-of-district transportation for $89,290 paid to Durham School Services. And then we had a number of contracted services and out-of-district tuition that we paid in that category as well. Then we had our general expenses, which totaled $680,728.45. At the top there, we paid the Manchester School District $230,132, excuse me, and that was for a fiscal year '24 MST final invoice. So this was something that we had ended up needing to pay them due to the state changing the amount that they reimburse MST for the services that they provided to our students. So we had to pay that amount to them. Goffstown Truck Center, we owed $193,834 for regular education transportation. Then we paid the assessment for SAU 19, $133,329. And then another large payment in this category was to Amazon for books, supplies, and equipment. There are a number of other payments that we made here as well that are all listed on the manifest, which will be posted on the website. Our food service, we paid $21,239.57 at the end of the year for food.
All right, thank you. So I'll need a motion to approve this manifest.
I'll make a motion to approve the manifest for May 29th through June 30th.
Thank you, Vanessa. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Jenny. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Brady? Yes? Opposed? Abstaining? We're unanimous. All right, Caroline.
So the next one I'll go through is July 1st through July 28th of 2025. This is a larger one because it's an entire month. So I will make a motion to approve the total amount of $4,622,276.
I'll need a second.
Second.
By Jack. All right, go ahead.
So the first category here is payroll, taxes, and benefits. $2,385,851.69 is the total here. We did have a much larger retirement contribution to the New Hampshire retirement system, and this was due to the large balloon payments made the month prior. So our retirement contribution was larger this time. Then our special ed category equals $261,021.72. We paid Durham School Services for in-district and out-of-district transportation at $73,563. A lot of out-of-district services, we paid $49,333 to Seven Hills, and then $43,338 to regional services. There was a number of other special ed payments that we made to contracted services and special ed transportation and out-of-district tuition on this voucher, on this manifest. Then our general expenses, pretty large category here. We paid a total of $1,789,541.54. I'll just go over the larger payments here. We paid $300,000 to the trustee of the trust funds, and this was the voter-approved capital reserve deposit. We paid the assessment for SAU 19 at $250,76. Then we paid Pinnacle Public Finance. This was our 12 out of 15 payments for the Honeywell Project. That was a total of $167,303. Then we paid Primex. This was for property and liability insurance. I don't know if that one is listed on yours. I had to change it on the one that I got earlier. Yep, so it would have to change on your list as well. So it's property and liability insurance, not workers' comp insurance, for a total of $145,402. We paid GovConnection $122,463 for IT equipment. This was for 91 computers that we bought for staff. We paid Manchester School District $119,470. This was a semester two bill from last year for MST and for homeless transportation. The last large payout that we had that was over $100,000 was to WEI for IT and network engineering services at $105,501. The last category on here is for food service, so that totaled $64,134.46. We did end up paying Singer Kittredge $39,267, and that was for the new serving line over at MVMS that we approved last year. That's everything.
Thank you, Caroline. Any questions or comments? All right, seeing none, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Brady? Yes? Opposed? Abstaining? We're unanimous. All right, thank you. All right, Doug?
All right, thanks. So the first thing we have on is a 5% contingency vote. So again, that can happen because our auditors came in the third week of August, so that's Plazek and Sanderson. They look at all the money that comes in, all the money that goes out, and overall, we did really well as far as having very few adjusting entries and at this point, no major findings. So the "we" really is a lot of people, because it involves teachers, and assistants, administration, SAU staff, and the business office. So everyone kind of has to do their part right in order for when the auditors come to kind of say, yep, you, you know, you crossed your t's, you dotted your i's. So it's definitely a "we" thing. I appreciate working with the business office every day. They do a great job, but it kind of starts and it kind of funnels up to us. So that was great to kind of go through the audit. From the audit comes more of our official fund balance. So the fund balance is $2,949,32. So the reason why it is so large is such things as paraprofessional salaries, where we were trying to hire paraprofessionals, and we were not able to, as well as teacher salaries and benefits, where a teacher who retired or left the district was at a higher step than the teacher that came in to replace them, as well as just health insurance overall. So a lot of it had to do with factors that were somewhat in our control, as far as, you know, hiring somebody at a lower step, but also factors that were not in our control at all. So of that fund balance, what has been projected, to go back to the taxpayers, is $1,700,000. So if we take the $1,700,000 away from that unassigned fund balance of $2,949,32, we get $1,249,32. So that is the money tonight that the school board has a chance to make a decision on. So the decision that's in front of you is a contingency fund. That's the only decision. It can't be used for anything else. So we are allowed to keep 5% of the money which is raised for education locally. So that is consistent of the local education tax effort, as well as the SWEPT, which is a statewide education property tax, which is retained locally and goes to offset, goes as one of our revenues. So 5% of that is $1,731,296. Last year, the board voted to keep 1.3 million, and going into the audit, we kept it the same at 1.3 million, knowing that we had a chance tonight to vote again on it. So if we upped it to the maximum, that would be an additional 431... So if we upped it to the maximum, that would be an additional $431,296. That would then leave an additional, because we can only go to the maximum, we can go up to the maximum, we can go any number less than the maximum. If we went to the maximum, that would leave an additional $817,736 to offset taxes, bringing the total amount to offset taxes up to $2,517,296. So that's the money that instead of raising an additional 2.5 million this year coming up, we wouldn't have to raise that in taxes. Therefore, it lowers the tax rate. So reasons why we might want to maximize the 5% contingency fund, they aren't new reasons. It is that we know that special education costs, as well as cyber attacks, can be costly, and a lot of times, we don't know when they're going to happen. So the, you know, larger special education costs come with a family that might move in, and cyber attacks, they're hitting different schools at different times. Another reason would be to kind of keep a consistent tax rate. So the more we keep up with our projections to offset taxes, the better we are at keeping a consistent tax rate, and this would give us another option to do that in future years if we kept a little bit higher of an amount. Another known thing that is happening at the schools is just the overcrowding at Maple Ave. There are a lot of students in not a large amount of space anymore. So there are just known expenses that could happen, and there are some unknown expenses that we don't have control over, to some degree, being like cyber attacks. So it is our recommendation that we max out that 5%, knowing that we'd still give a healthy amount to offset taxes as well, and more than was projected.
Thank you, Doug. Anybody have any questions, comments? It was discussed at A&amp;F, and A&amp;F was in agreeance to this.
If I may.
Go ahead, Brian.
Another one I would share, Doug, is on the manifest, we saw that there was an additional cost to MST. I do want the board to know, we're expecting that cost again for last school year. So the only way to stop that would be for me to tell kids they can't enroll in vocational programming, which we haven't done. We've allowed as many kids that want to take programming to allow them, but we're going to get hit again as a result of that.
So, and we did encumber $240,000 of last year's money in anticipation of that invoice, because it's definitely preferable if we use the money that's been raised for that year to pay for that year's services. So knowing that we're going to have to pay a decent true-up as well, an additional final bill, we do have $240,000 set aside for that, so.
All right, anybody questions, comments? If not, we'll need a new motion. We're going to max it.
I'll make a motion. I'd like to authorize the VA to fund the contingency fund to the full 5% in accordance with RSA 198:4-B with funds from the unassigned fund balance from year 25 in the amount of
All right, thank you, Jack. Do I have a second?
One second.
By Caroline. Any further discussion? Go ahead, Shane.
I just want to state on the record that I'm going to abstain because I only heard part of the conversation, so.
Sure.
That's all.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Brady, yes, opposed and abstaining. So we have one abstention. All right, so motion passed. Thank you, Doug.
Great, thanks. So I'll now bring that vote back to Plazek and Sanderson, and they will readjust the unassigned fund balance at that point, as well as our contingency fund. And I'm starting to work on the DOE 25, which leads to the MS 25.
Which sets the tax.
Which sets the tax rate.
Yep.
Exactly. So at your next board meeting, what happens between now and then is I get those numbers to Plazek and Sanderson. We are one of some districts who have them review our data, which is always a great thing, and they either correct it or they give their blessing, and then we start communicating with the state, but we get the numbers ready for the board to sign off on next time as well. So that is that. Next thing I have on there is revenue and expense reports. This goes along with the manifest summary as well as the check register, and that's just a reminder that they are online for everybody to see. You can see them by month. Sometimes you'll see a period next to it as well. So we have the 12 fiscal periods where July is our first period of the fiscal year. So you'll see, sometimes you'll see period one, but then you'll see the word July next to it as well to kind of match up with that also. Every month, we get an update to how much money is held in the school impact fee account. As of July 31st, that was $391,460.1. So the soonest that we have to spend any of this money, and it's a smaller subset of this money, would be December of 2028. So we do have some time, but my experience is anything that has to do with impact fees, we would not want to rush into that decision because it's something that we'd want to validate that it was a proper use of impact fees as well.
Go ahead, Jared.
Just looking at the impact fees listing that you have here, have we received any impact fees for certificates of occupancy and the new developments that have occurred?
Some. I think, I don't want to misstate here, Doug, but if you look at the school impact fee schedule, the second number from the bottom, Jared, I think that's from the Bog Road.
Okay, and that's just one for all of those units?
That was $236,000 of impact fees, just one transaction, and I believe that was the Bog Road project.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jared. All right, Doug.
All right. Each year, we also look to reaffirm policy DFA, so that's in your packet.
All right, so I'll need a motion to reaffirm DFA.
Motion to reaffirm policy DFA for this fiscal year.
Thank you, Jared. Do I have a second?
Second.
One second. By Ginny. All right, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Brady, yes, opposed and abstaining, we are unanimous.
Summer procurement and commodities. So we can go ahead and strike the heating oil. Goffstown doesn't use heating oil. I just unfortunately copied that over, so we are fully on propane. As we looked at paper, we ended up hearing back from a couple different places, and WB Mason kept their prices the same as last year, where the other person who submitted that prices were higher. So it was great to have the same prices as last year. So that is the bid that we accepted, and we will move forward with. So what is not on this agenda, but I would like to bring up, unless, I don't know, Brian, if it's in a different spot, is the treasurer's, the stipends.
Uh, didn't we have that on?
It's on the old business.
Okay, sorry. Old business, and then.
So hold on that for now.
So I think that might be. I think that's it then.
All right, thank you, Doug.
Thanks.
All right, Budget Committee, Jared.
There are no scheduled meetings for the Budget Committee at this time that have been on the calendar. However, I'd like to try to coordinate the walkthroughs of our schools with the Budget Committee. I don't know if we have those dates yet.
I think we do. I think we do.
Okay.
So I'll talk about that during my report.
Sounds good.
Right, because you gave me two dates, Doug, 10/28 and 10/30.
Those were for the presentations.
Those were budget presentations.
The walkthroughs, the Budget Committee was looking to do a little bit different this year. Instead of seeing every space, every building in the town, they want to see buildings where next year, there's a budget amount to do something like different or vastly different in the near future as well. So if there's nothing big happening at a school or place, they're not looking to.
Then they don't want to tour. So maybe. So we're following the CIP, basically, is what we're looking for.
I think maybe any clarification you could get.
Okay.
So here's what we want. We want to make sure that the Budget Committee has the opportunity to view our schools, to talk about some of the major cost drivers, but we want to be mindful and respectful of everyone's time. So if the Budget Committee doesn't want to go to particular buildings, that's fine.
I don't think, well, we haven't discussed it.
So, but that's what was conveyed to Doug.
Yeah.
Because they may not be looking to tour all buildings. And that is all from the Budget Committee.
All right, thank you, Jared. All right, CIP, Jack.
CIP approved the matrix, has pretty much, it was presented by all the different things in our matrix. Scott came and spoke. Their biggest concerns are about our outlying year of 2930, where we have the big placeholder for a possible school, and worried that we're putting all our eggs in one basket. It was discussed how we were trying not to put up too much stuff, where we had the teachers' contract and the staffing contract, and have that come after that, so we didn't put our needs at odds with one another. So they were receptive to that, and we're set to present to the full planning board on September 11th at their meeting, and I'll present the school. Side.
All right, thank you, Jack. All right, CNE, Ginny.
Our next meeting will be September 15th at 7:00 PM at the SAU.
All right, thank you. PNC, Rheta.
Yes, PNC met this evening. We had a really great meeting. I think the big takeaway is our focus for the next year is really going to be on communications. And we, Scott is now leading this group, so he shared a number of projects he's been working on internally at the schools, but also things that our committee will be looking at and trying to establish some standards for communications that go out. So we've got the three things, but what are some other ways that we can get our communications out? I don't have a copy of the sample, the sample communication that he had pulled together, the one with Maroon on it. One of the things we're looking at is some one-pagers that could be available on the website. For example, this one is Understanding Public Comment. And this is just a template where we could have a number of them on the website. When we have public comment, we can maybe hand them out. It has a QR code that goes out to the policy. The first one, we've got a long list. We brainstormed last June a long list of topics we could present, and one that we want to get out by the end of September is the budgeting process and what it entails, because we hear from folks during the deliberative that they didn't know anything about the budget happening, or, you know, what the process is all about. So this is one we'll focus on. We'll be working more on those. And the other, the other big thing, going back to communications, is the having a communication plan. So we're taking a look at it. Vanessa's going to take a stab at repurposing somebody else's. But it's really, I think this is probably one of the better meetings we've had in a long time, where I think we'll have a real focus throughout the year, so we'll be bringing things to the committee. But one thing to share was the national night out, and I'll pass this around. We did, we participated again, and this is just an example of things that we can do in thinking about. We kind of hobbled together our, one of the panels, which was all of the school board members. A lot of kids come. I think we've got some ideas of what we might do. It's all about the kids. The whole event is about the kids, but the kids come with the parents. So we were side by side with Kate from HR. She was recruiting, and we think that maybe next year, we'll look at inviting the Boston School Board to participate, since we're wearing our SAU T-shirts. And I also forgot to mention, we have new T-shirts for our new board members, so that was, that was really good. There was a winner. We drew a winner for the, we had a free raffle for a gift certificate to Brown Graphics for a school, school sweatshirt, whatever it might be, and Courtney DeRocher was the winner. Don't know her, but she now has lots of swag for her favorite school. The, I think that is it. Did I miss anything?
Do you have a next meeting set?
Yes, November 3rd. So I think the regular board meeting is not on the 3rd, but our committee will meet on the 3rd.
Okay. All right, thank you, Rheta. All right, policy review, Shane.
So policy hasn't met in a couple months, but we will meet again on September 15th, 2025, at 5:30 at the SAU.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and it looks like we have an SAU Joint Area Subcommittee meeting. We're still waiting on those dates, right? Okay, do we need to meet? Do they meet through the summer?
We met in June, and as I recall, we'd have to look at those minutes again, but there was interest in meeting in September, as I recall.
For the subcommittee?
Yes, because there was discussion about the possibility of further exploration of an MOU outside of the grade seven to 12 range that the area agreement already touches. I think that's what the decision was. So we'll have to find a date.
Send out dates in September?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, and then the SAU is having their board meeting on October 16th at 6:00 PM at the SAU office, so that's our first one for the year, the October one. And then Shane.
SAU 19 Policy will meet on September 17th, 2025, 5:30 at the SAU office. So two policy meetings that week for anyone who loves policy.
That's right, come on down.
And even if you don't.
It's important stuff.
Yes, it is. Thank you, Shane. All right, Superintendent's Report, go ahead, Brian.
Thank you. So a few updates. I hope everyone had a great summer. We are excited and ready to welcome kids back. So we are, we're ready. The buildings look terrific. We've had a great summer. So a few things I wanted to make sure the board was aware of. Durham Transportation, which is our vendor for special education, has been bought out. So I wanted you to be aware that they were bought out by I-Square. Bigger kind of national company, doesn't seem to impact services as far as we're concerned thus far. If you hadn't heard, there was a ruling that was made by Judge David Rolfe on the Rand School Funding suit. So yet again, the finding was that the state continues to not meet their constitutional obligation and that the current funding system violates the state constitution. So more to come. In all likelihood, we're going to see a flip of, we're going to see the local assessment go down, and we're going to see the statewide education property tax go up. Your overall tax burden will largely be unimpacted, is my prediction. And has been my steadfast prediction on that. We met this summer. The town of Goffstown has a new composting program that they're exploring through a vendor, and we met with them, and we're going to start as a pilot. All of our kitchens are going to do a new composting program in the kitchen with a vendor that the town is using. It's actually the same vendor that the community of New Boston uses as well, so it's a known entity, and that's already happening. So that process is happening straight away. As always, we work very closely with Adam Jacobs from DPW. Negotiations are scheduled. We have our first session with Goffstown Education Association is already booked. It's always a challenge to get dates out of the negotiator from NEA, so we'll look forward to getting the whole schedule established at that time, but that's moving forward. Good news on the Mountain View Cistern project, on time, on budget. No issues, no drama. So.
Is done, done now?
Done, done. It's done. It's all wrapped up, cleaned up, everything. Randy told me he's going through about a 40-page report that EMC did at the end of the project, but overall, everything has gone smoothly. Things have pressurized well. So as far as we know, all the fire suppression system is working fine. We've worked with our new fire captain, and that is all taken care of. I wanted to give a brief update on enrollment numbers, and I asked Mrs. Kohler if she would give an update. There's a couple of grade levels that we have some concern with. So as the board knows, Maple Ave is kind of busting at the seams, so we're going to talk a little bit about Maple Ave, and there are also some concerns around 5th grade. Mrs. Kohler?
Sure. So I wanted to let the board know that typically, we have six sections per grade level over at Maple Avenue, and because we had an influx of first graders coming in, we went down to five sections in 4th grade and have a seventh section in 1st grade instead. So what that meant was, we have 132 first graders over at Maple Avenue, which was significantly more students than we intended. more students than we anticipated. Though not all of our students come from Glen Lake, we normally can figure out with some of our local private kindergartens and things like that where our numbers are. And we had a lot more than we anticipated. We thought we were going to be between 115 and 120, and we went way over that. I do want to mention, this is not just new students and some of our new developments. This has been from house sales, multi-generational families living in the same household. So it's not just because of some of the new construction that we've had in town. So what that did is it brought our 1st grade sections to where we want them to be, which is about 19 students per section. What it did with 4th grade, though, is it brings our 4th grade numbers up to between 25 or 26 in a section. It's very high, but to have 25 or 26 first graders versus 4th graders, we had to make a tough decision.
Yep.
So I just wanted the board and the community to know. And clearly, we don't have space at Maple Avenue. As the superintendent mentioned, we are busting at the seams there. So we're working with Maple Avenue Administration. It was the best we could do with flipping those sections around. I also want to let the board know that we also have an influx of 5th graders this year at Mountain View. We typically are around 175 to 180 students for an incoming 5th grade class, and we are at 206. So again, we're looking at sections of around 25. We're going to continue to watch those numbers. Interestingly enough, as you know, we have our 7th graders from New Boston who come and join us. So we're really going to have to watch those numbers to see what that's going to look like as they move through the years. As I mentioned, those 4th grade sections over at Maple Avenue. Looking ahead, when you take our numbers at Maple Avenue and our numbers at Bartlett, I don't have concerns at this time of what our 5th grade numbers would look like for next school, for the following school year, because it would go back to typical because of the lower numbers at Bartlett. So I at least wanted the board to know where we were with enrollment. We are going to continue to watch those 5th grade numbers right now at Mountain View, and then obviously, you know, making sure that we have enough supports for those 4th grade teachers over at Maple Avenue with those large sections.
Thank you, Wendy.
Thank you.
Couple of other things. I just wanted to let you know that I received notification that we are going to have an audit of our breakfast and lunch programs. So it's been a while since we've had one of these, but Bartlett was identified and they'll be coming in late winter, early spring, so we'll welcome the state, come on in. I wanted to let you know that parking at Goffstown High School continues to be exceptionally challenging for everyone involved. We don't have enough parking. This is something that we kind of take for granted, but I think it's important for me to continue to tell the board. We continue to have more requests than we have parking available. People are more frustrated this year perhaps than they've been in the past because the town has passed a couple of new ordinances, which now they're towing cars from Barnard Park. There's also some changes to the Parks and Rec building, parking over there. So I do want the board to be aware that we cannot give a parking pass to every student who wants one or who might be eligible. This continues to be a real challenge for us. At some point, I've been kind of quietly talking for a number of years. Out back behind the high school here, from the softball field to Wallace Road, there's an area that we have talked about in the past, the possibility of considering additional parking or fields. Parking is really expensive, so anytime you talk about putting in a parking lot, you're talking about a lot of money. But I just wanted the board to know, parking continues to be a massive challenge here. And there are a lot of frustrated kids and there's a lot of frustrated parents. So I want them to know, I know, I hear you, but unfortunately, there's no good solution for more parking at Goffstown High School.
Goffstown in general.
Yeah, I think that's true, Jack. And lastly, I wanted to let you know, Mrs. Moran made you a little fancy of a packet this start of this year's meetings. She gave you all kinds of information from our CBAs to the area agreement to different kinds of resources. So she just wanted to make sure that you saw in your board packets that some of those resources were provided to you. And I think that's all I have. I'd be happy to stop there and ask if there are any questions that I can answer, Wendy, Doug, any of us.
Go ahead.
Just a quick question about the compost program. Is that something that kids can participate in at the schools or is that just in the kitchen?
It's just in the kitchen for now, and the vendor is looking to do, so let me tell you what they're doing in New Boston. New Boston has a program that if you want to sign up for this compost program, you have to submit information and then you're eligible and you can bring compost to them. And it includes, and I don't want to geek out too much on the compost stuff, but it's everything from animal products to human hair to, you know, vegetables, fruit, all of that kind of stuff. Some of the compost, you can't have meat in it, so you have to, but this particular vendor, they'll take meat, they'll take everything. So I don't know if the town is looking to do something beyond this first step, but I believe any interested community members could reach out to Adam at DPW. He's the one kind of overseeing it. But for right now, it's just the kitchens.
Thank you, Laura. Go ahead, Vanessa.
I just wanted to speak on the parking passing because it was a hot topic in some circles. I think, and I don't know if there's room for it, but I think some of the frustration too was parents getting different answers depending on who they talked to at the school, which kids could or could not, if kids' friends could get them, and if those friends were getting a pass already for the day, if they were allowed to get one for a friend. So I don't know if we have a policy for it, or maybe it should be double-checked and maybe widely circulated.
We don't have a policy with a capital P, so there's no school board policy on how parking passes are distributed. It's kind of a nightmare.
It 100% is a nightmare.
And this is what happens when you have not enough of a resource that people want.
Totally.
So.
I mean, I know kids line up super early to get them, so some kids I know were turned away.
Including, by the way, the assistant superintendent's son.
He was in line at 5:15 in the morning and he was not first. We had students arriving as early as 3:45 in the morning to get passes.
It's critical for some students to get it, but yeah, like some kids were there and then they got to the front of the line and were sent away because they got bad information from whoever they talked to at the office ahead of time. So might be something to solidify this year.
When in doubt, so Mrs. Kohler and I were over here while parking was happening, and it's one of those things that I always thank people for. It's a stressful day. Those kids are chomping at the bit to get their passes. We can only process so many of them so quickly. And again, this is what happens when you don't have enough of a resource. We have to ration it, which means that you're going to have winners and you're going to have losers. And there's no great way to do any of it. So the real fix would be more parking at Goffstown High School. But also, more kids are driving, less kids are taking the bus, you know, it just continues. By the way, we're paying for all those school buses, right? So we're not required to provide high school transportation. We do it because we recognize a lot of families need that. But then, when kids aren't freshmen or sophomores, boy, they want the parking pass. So more to come. We're happy to give the feedback to the high school. We tend to let them do it and we try to stay out of it. That tends to be my approach.
We used to just limit it to seniors, and then if anybody else, if there was room for anybody else, then.
Well, that's how, seniors have their own day.
Seniors, all seniors get a parking pass, but definitely when we get past the seniors, all the juniors certainly do not get parking passes.
This is a larger senior class this year than typical, so there was even less available for juniors on that second day.
Go ahead, Jared.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just looking at the school calendar, I know that we say on here that the last day of school looks to be June 18th. I know that we have to have 10 days built in for our calendar, so is that our actual last day of school is the 18th and we'll add days to that based on snow activities that occur?
Does that sound right?
Okay.
Yes.
Because people are asking like, hey, I want to schedule a vacation and they didn't know when it was. I wanted to make sure that was.
Yeah, and, you know, so in all likelihood, will that be the last day? Probably not.
But right now it is.
Probably not.
Thank you.
We hives are really high this year. That's all I'm saying.
All right. Any other questions for Brian?
Thank you.
All right. C and N, we'll move on to old business. So now, Doug, we're going to talk about the treasurer stipend discussion. This we discussed, if I remember correctly, at our retreat. So go ahead, Doug.
Yep. So thanks. So at, as the budget went through last year, it ended up with $0 for both the school boards, treasurer and district moderator, and then clerk stipend of $750 remained. So from talking with the board, it seems the boards want to keep their reduction to zero, which then would leave us with what to do with the treasurer, who last time, last year, was paid $1,500, as well as the district moderator, who was paid $150 last year.
Doug, can you speak to the responsibilities of the treasurer?
Yeah.
What is required of the treasurer? What kind of frequency?
So the treasurer is somebody who the business office communicates with multiple times in a week, because the money doesn't get reduced, released from TD Bank without the treasurer. So the treasurer has different rights in TD Bank than I have, than anyone else has. So no one else other than the deputy treasurer can do what the treasurer can do. So if we don't reach out to the treasurer and if they're not responsive, then things don't happen. So, you know, it's important that we have a treasurer who knows that they're going to be called on, especially for Goffstown, which is much more than, say, the SAU or the New Boston treasurer. The Goffstown treasurer gets called on a lot more. Speaking of things that they can only do, we have to make, we have to do a wire transfer to a company in Germany who we're getting some support from. I can't do the wire transfer. The only person that can do it is the treasurer. So the treasurer will be after work tomorrow going over to TD Bank in order to get that wire transfer done in a timely manner. The treasurer also, at the end of every month, they, they're looking at our finances, that the TD, the actual numbers that come from TD, and as also what checks we still have to pay. And they're balancing it out each month and kind of certifying our numbers. So it's a multiple times a week thing, as well as a heavier lift at the end of every month. And then, just like you had audit questionnaires, they have audit questionnaires and things that they have to do at the end of every fiscal year as well.
So it's, we have to decide if we're going to keep it and also the district moderator, which is who does our deliberative. So he gets paid $150 to do that. So what is everybody's thoughts on it?
I would just share, it would be our recommendation to continue to pay the treasurer. I think it's a lot of work. There's a lot of responsibility.
I would just always, whenever, I'd always just want to grab the best of what we can. So sometimes, you know, people are doing it because they want to get back, but sometimes it's a little bit of a stipend that helps. And so for a treasurer where things really have to, the i's really have to be dotted, the t's have to be crossed, like, we are exact, like, and we need somebody else who wants to be exact. And I don't ever want the pool to decrease for any reason from who we can grab for a treasurer.
Go ahead, Jared.
These are elected positions, aren't they?
The treasurer is?
Treasurer and the moderator is an elected position. That was cut by the Budget Committee last year for a budget and was ratified by this board and the proposed budget that was sent to the voters and approved by our voters. I just want to make sure that we all understand that for this conversation. I'll let Jenny go because I have something else, too.
Okay. Go ahead, Jenny.
Somehow, I think that the voters didn't want us to get a stipend. I don't really think that they thought about the ancillary people. And I don't, I am very sure that they don't, didn't understand what the responsibilities of the treasurer was. And I think it's fair for them to get paid for what they do. And I understand why the Budget Committee cut us. I don't agree with it. I don't think necessarily it was fair because of some things that I read about. But I don't think that we have to bring the treasurer, who is an important position. We need it done. We need it done right, or the voters are going to be really upset if it's not done right. So I think it's fair to give them money so that we have competent people doing it.
Thank you, Jenny.
I think that's easily enough explained to the voters.
Go ahead, Jared.
I know Jack was at this meeting representing the school board when this came up with the stipends, but I'm pretty confident that our representative said that this wasn't just the school board, this was other public officials, because Scott did that every year, to say it was school board, moderator, treasurer. We were smart enough, I would think, to pull out the clerk money in a separate line item because we saw this coming down the pipeline eventually. But this was discussed. It wasn't, the Budget Committee knew and it was talked about in public that it wasn't just school board members getting stipends. I would ask the members, the administration, what line item would this be paid out of? Because this line item was zeroed out in our budget. And according to RSA 32, I can't remember the subparagraph, anything with a zero line item, we cannot transfer money into it.
You can transfer money into.
Not that line item if it's been zeroed out, because we had to go years past when we did that, and we had to add a dollar into each individual line item so that we could do line item transfers.
I believe that was by function.
By function. It's a larger function, not as it breaks it down to function by account. So it is true, but it's true by function, by the larger accounts, which are made up of a subset of a lot of different accounts.
And so that's different than what we were told years ago. So why did we have to change and do we need a legal opinion of being able to pay out of this line item?
No, I, we can get one if you want. So we overspend lines all the time, so that's just part of the accounting of how we do business. So you can overspend a line. You can spend a line that has zero money in it. You can deficit spend a line. I'm comfortable doing that. I think the bigger question is, I don't know that your moderator is a make or break for $150. I think that he does this as a volunteer service. The treasurer, I think, is a little different, but ultimately, I heard the mandate from the Budget Committee as well, and I think it was clear they didn't want school board members to get it. If this is part of it as well, then it might be a hard decision to make that the answer is it's a zero. Ultimately, that'll be up to the board. We do see the role as being mission critical. The role is mission critical, and we want it done right. And Doug's right, like, we call all the time and need action. And I don't think Doug shared, but in addition to the reconciling in the bank end of things, they have to go into the system, they have to approve things in the system, there's just, there's a lot that goes into being the treasurer of a school district, and it's a lot more work than people would know.
Brian, is this, is this a job that we can put in our budget instead of having it like part of the school board budget line?
We certainly could identify it through the FY '27 budget development process. We could put the stipend back in, sure. Yep.
Jenny, you mean like a separate line, like what we did with the clerk, kind of saying that this is.
Like separated out.
Yeah. And just put it back in the budget and then not have it.
Yep. We could even put it in the same account where the clerk already is, so we could just add a little more to that amount that's already in there, if that's the board's pleasure. I don't know if anyone spoke to the treasurer, if she's aware of this discussion.
I did not speak to her about it.
Yep.
Because you know it's hard. She's been doing this job for a long time, and then all of a sudden to be, and she's been doing a good job with it.
Yep.
And then all of a sudden.
Very responsive.
Yeah. And then all of a sudden be said, eh, we're not going to pay you anymore. And you've already done the work, but we're not going to pay you for it. I don't see how that's fair.
Does anyone else have any comment, feelings, questions? Anyone? Go ahead, Jack.
I think she deserves a stipend, you know? And I see it as being a drop in the bucket, you know? And when I did sit in that Budget Committee meeting, I did express how I thought it was just a petty attack on other people giving service, even taking our stipends, and that it was generated from stuff not to reduce my taxes, because even the whole full $30,000 they took out of our budget made not a two-cent tax impact. So it was really just a, in my view, performance art, and I'm not afraid to say that. So I would like to see the treasurer get paid. I mean, it's a responsibility. I would like to see the, the treasurer get paid. I mean, it's, it's a responsibility that no one else feels, okay, so it's an elected position, whatever. So do we need to make it an appointed position, so that we can pay him, and take the power out of their hand? Then we just appoint that person. I would think that we can find fifteen hundred dollars to pay a treasurer to oversee a fifty-five million dollar budget. That's pretty reasonable.
Thank you, Jack. Shane, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I did. Thank you. For me, it's not about whether the person deserves the money, because I think that they do deserve the money. It's more along the lines of what Jared was saying, as far as the, the way it's received by people who have voted to cut that money, because I can foresee this somehow coming up next budget cycle, and they're cutting a thousand dollars from a field trip line, because we have to pay the treasurer a thousand dollars. So that's my concern, because I don't want to take any more money away from the students of Goffstown, which I fear could happen because of this. So that's my trepidation with this scenario.
Thank you, Shane. Good points. Yeah, go ahead, Caroline.
What would happen if nobody ran for the position in the future? Is this something that, like, we have to have, as like a sort of checks and balances system?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. That is a good question. I don't know what that...
Well, so if, if I remember correctly, one of the bills that Mr. Gross worked with our local delegation on was to make the school district treasurer an appointed position, instead of an elected position. So as I recall, that was the proposed change to the statute, so that didn't pass, as I recall. So it is an elected official. What would happen if you didn't have anyone run? We probably would be at a position that we're getting a legal opinion, we're talking to the DRA, we're trying to figure out what we need to do, DRA, Department of Revenue Administration, because this is an important function that needs to happen. And if we didn't have anyone to do that, then that would be problematic.
We would appoint someone.
Go ahead, Jared.
Just on the same piece, well, it is an elected position, it would be considered open. We do have a deputy treasurer that we do appoint, they would take the acting functions until we appoint somebody as a vacant position.
Yeah, I would think so. I would think that's accurate.
So that's what I think the process would be. So we would have the ability to at least have the treasurer, deputy treasurer, act in that capacity, to do the job until somebody was appointed.
Yep.
To answer the question. Further, I, Shane said it, so I'm not going to repeat what Shane said, but Shane is exactly online, I'm very aligned with what Shane said. That's my concern.
I agree. With everything said, this is very important. I think these people should be paid. However, I'm worried about the, what's next if this happens.
Go ahead, Jack.
I, I fear that also, but I, I'm a much more confrontational person than most of the people on this board, and I have been my whole life, and I probably won't change. So then I think that the, that the very least, the path is that we ask Jared, or if it's me at the time, to, to bring it back to the budget committee, and, and one with kick gloves, or a baseball bat, whichever it takes, and try and express our feeling that we think this position falls like the clerk position, and that it's worth funding for the, for the peanuts that it's taken.
So it would be into next year, this budget for this next school year, to put it back in, go to the budget committee and go from there. Is that what everybody seems to be heading towards, to at least try again with the budget committee, to see if this is something we can get passed?
I do like Ginny's suggestion about doing it the same way we do for the clerk.
With the clerk?
Yeah.
Yep. Okay. Doug, is that, do you need anything else? Do you guys need anything?
So we're, we're saying not to fund it this year, but to put it in the budget process for next year.
Yeah.
Okay.
So the other thing we'll do, Doug, is we'll want to reach out and just let her know.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead, Rhonda.
I'm assuming she would know now, if she saw the budget. Is this a surprise?
I mean, we've talked about it a few times, so I don't, I don't know. I don't know.
The moderator didn't know until I told them.
Yeah, we should at least let her know.
Yeah, we'll, we'll reach out.
Okay. And say we're very sorry.
Yep.
So do we need a motion to, everybody's in agreement?
I don't think so. I don't think so. I think we're clear on the direction.
Okay. Everybody's good with it? All right, so moving on to second read and adoption of policy. Shane?
All right. So it looks like Mrs. Moore has made a little cheat sheet here, for those of us who have not reviewed these policies in a number of months. So please refer, refer to your cheat sheet while we go through these. The first one is Policy AC, which is the nondiscrimination, equal opportunity employment policy. As you look at your cheat sheet here, they're presented for second read on April twenty-first, so I don't know if anyone has any updates, or any other things they'd like to discuss on this one.
I don't see anything, Shane.
Motion to approve Policy AC as presented.
Motion by Jared, do I have a second? By Ginny. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Brady, yes. Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous. Go ahead.
Great. Thank you, everyone. The next batch was the ADC, GBED, JICG, which you'll remember is all the same policy, just for different groups of people. One's for students, one is for staff, I believe, and one is for the public, if I'm remembering correctly. So I'm guessing there's probably nothing to hear, but if anyone has anything. Otherwise, we're looking for a motion.
Do I need a motion for this?
Make a motion that we present, that we recommend.
We approve.
That we approve. That's the word I was looking for. Thank you. Policy ADC, GBED, JICG. Do I need to list all the other letters? As presented.
Thank you, Jack. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
By Caroline. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Brady, yes. Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous. Okay, Shane?
Now, EHB is a little bit different, because EHB, we adopted EHR on June second. However, EHB was not listed for adoption that night. So we're looking to adopt EHB in concert with EHR, which was adopted on June second.
All the motions?
And that's in reference to data records, retention, and destruction.
Yeah.
Motion to approve EHB as presented.
By Caroline, do I have a second?
Second.
By Ginny. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Brady, yes. Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous.
Thank you. The next one is Policy IC, which is actually kind of like the, the combination of three different old policies, which was IC, ICA, and ID. And the recommendation, and this is in reference to the school year and the school year calendar, and the recommendation was to have all those items combined into one policy, which would be Policy IC.
All right, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve IC as presented.
By Caroline, do I have a second?
Second.
By Ginny. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Brady says aye. Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous. Go ahead, Shane.
All right, JICI was a policy that we discussed, I think, at length at one of our last meetings. This is in reference to dangerous weapons on school property. A recommendation was made to remove and add language to the second to last paragraph on page one, if you wanted to look at that.
This is a student policy, if I remember correctly.
Correct.
So why do we still have police referenced with student here?
Page number?
Page number one, weapons under control of law enforcement personnel are permitted. Do we have any law enforcement that are students? Does this only pertain to students? Because the way it's written does not only pertain to students, it pertains to the public.
This is a student policy, so it is exclusively for students in the J section.
JICI, so one, two, three paragraphs down, weapons under control of law enforcement personnel are permitted.
But down at the bottom, the last paragraph says, members of the public who may be reported to local law enforcement authorities if possession of a weapon is used in threatening, harassing, or intimidating manner, in accordance to federal policy.
That was my second point I was going to make.
So I think that's why it's in there, because if it's used in a threatening manner.
Well, that, that's the point I'm trying to make, is members of the public aren't students, if this is referenced to only students.
I, I believe the sentence that says weapons under the control of law enforcement personnel are permitted, there's no harm in that sentence. That sentence doesn't give permission to students to do anything. So if that, if that sentence is removed, it doesn't change the policy at all. At all. Same thing with the members of the public. Members of the public aren't being addressed through a student policy. So this whole section, members of the public may be reported, that also, in my opinion, could be removed, because this is pertaining to students. Some of the carve-outs, when you look at a student policy around JICI, has to do with things like ROTC, if you have any shooting programs, some of those kinds of things, which some school districts have. If you have an ROTC program, they typically do have some kind of a shooting program involved with it as well. And, but those two sentences, I would agree, they can be, they can be removed, or they can be left. They don't, they don't allow students to do anything.
Is this, is there a policy where they're, where they talk about adults?
Visitors to schools.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. So those two sentences can be removed, or they can be retained. I would leave it to the board.
So if we want to, go ahead, Shane.
What are people thinking? I, like Brian said, I can go either way. I think it doesn't really change the intent of the policy. So I mean...
But if we're going to remove it, we need to have that in the motion.
Right, right.
Go ahead, Vanessa.
I think the first sentence doesn't make sense for the policy, but the second one that you had mentioned, I do think it's just giving a general statement. I mean, I'm not married to either one, I'd just like to decide one way, but I think if I was going to just remove the one, it would be the first one. I would consider the kids, knowing that the public could be, sorry, that they are kind of the public, and if they are doing something with that firearm, the public would, or the police would be notified. That's the essence of what that sentence is. That's what I'm picking up. So I would leave that one in, because that would be a ramification for the students, part of the policy, in my opinion.
Because if you have a school shooter, then somebody really should let somebody know if someone has a weapon in there, like...
Well, remember, students and staff are not permitted to bring any weapons, because that's a violation of the safe and federal gun-free schools law. That doesn't pertain to members of the public, however, who are non-employees.
Right.
And that's what the sentence...
That's why I'm kind of calling out that sentence specifically, because they are allowed to do, well, not have it in a threatening manner, but they are allowed to carry, or to have weapons.
The threatening manner pieces.
Yeah. And, and that's just breaking the law, so that doesn't need to necessarily be in, in this policy for students. I mean, if, if you're looking for unanimous consent, I would want those two items removed, because that does not pertain to students, which this is supposed to be a student policy.
And they're not allowed to bring guns, anyway.
And I'd say, not just guns, but weapons.
I would agree with all of that.
All right, so...
So I will make a motion to remove the third paragraph down, weapons under control of law enforcement personnel are permitted. I've moved to strike that, as well as the paragraph, members of the public may be reported to local law enforcement authorities in possession of a weapon is used in a threatening, harassing, intimidating manner. And that, in accordance with federal law. And that second one, I think we should remove, because that does not pertain to students, and this should, this policy's always supposed to be on students.
Right. All right, Jared, I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
By Vanessa. All right, any further discussion? All right, see and none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Brady, yes. Opposed, abstaining. All right, it's unanimous. Did you get all that, Denise?
I make a motion to adopt Policy JICI, as we have outlined in this call, or this meeting.
All right, do I have a second?
I'll second.
By Vanessa. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Brady, yes. Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous.
And the last piece of business we have on the policy side tonight is JICIR, and the recommendation is that we delete this recommendation, as that language has been moved into JICD.
Motion to delete Policy JICIR, the regulation.
All right, I have a motion, do I have a second?
A second.
By Vanessa. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Brady, yes. Opposed, abstaining. All right, we're unanimous. All right, thank you, Shane.
Thank you. Thanks, Laura.
Thank you, guys. All right. So the next on the agenda is the, the schedule for our school board meeting. I know Scott and Denise sent off emails that we were supposed, with the calendar stuff, to approve, and then we have now in writing. So does anybody see anything? And if not, we need to make a motion to approve this.
Let's...
And some are, if we need, because we're coming back from vacations, or, or stuff.
Well...
Go ahead, Shane.
I think that we have the if needed kind of caveats on some of the, some of the meetings that might be unnecessary. So I think as long as we keep that if needed, with, kind of to remind us of the fact that it's coming off of vacation or something, there might not be a lot of business to take care of, it might be unnecessary to do.
Okay. So is that a motion?
Sure. I want to make a motion to, to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six Goffstown school board meeting dates as presented.
Thank you, Shane. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
By Laura. Any further discussion? Go ahead, Rhonda.
So the potential makeup days are supposed to be in gray?
Where do you see that?
There's none.
Oh, she's looking at the school calendar.
Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Wait.
Are you looking at this calendar?
I'm looking at it.
I thought you were going out to the school calendar, and it's like...
It isn't.
Oh, it's in the packet. Yeah, this is the school board.
Okay.
It's because it's Jared's. Oh, it's Jared's. So we're just approving our schedule. Are you good with that?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Brady, yes. Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous.
We're stuck around to that motion.
All right. Sorry, Shane. All right. So new business temporary policy, JICJ. Do you want to talk about that?
Yeah, so at this point, I think everybody is probably aware that the governor has signed into law a cell phone ban, a ban on all personal communication devices for students from bell to bell. So we are required to adopt a policy, and we are required to review it annually. So what I wanted to offer to the board was an opportunity to adopt a temporary policy, to get us so we are compliant for the opening of school, and then to slow down, and take our time, and develop the permanent policy with thought and with time. School districts have been scrambling to adopt this policy all summer. The School Boards Association model has some issues with it, in my opinion. It's a little heavy-handed from a punishment perspective, and I think that we're going to want to take a more nuanced approach. I think that this is going to be a big change for kids, this is going to be a big change for families. It's important to know, we didn't do this. So this wasn't a board policy, this wasn't a superintendent or administrative action, this is a new state law that was signed by the governor. Should we treat six-year-olds and eighteen-year-olds the same? Probably not. Probably not. We have high school kids who have jobs, who drive cars, who can vote, who can sign up for the military, but they can't send their parents a text during the day. So I think that this is going to be a big change at Goffstown High School. For our other schools, I think that this will be a very minor change. I think it will be not all that significant. I think it'll be challenging for parents that want to get in touch with their kids, challenging for kids that want to get in touch with their parents, but I think that overall, at the elementary and middle school level, this will be okay. It's important for everyone to remember, the concept is that phones are causing harm to kids. So you have to go into this recognizing that, whether that's accurate or not, the perception of our legislature is that phones are causing damage to kids, and that's why they took the action that they have. So the temporary policy that you see before you has all... So the temporary policy that you see before you has all of the elements that are included in RSA 189:1, and remember, this language that was added, it was one paragraph was added, it was added to House Bill 2, which was the budget rider. So this got tacked on to the budget rider and all school districts now have to adopt the policy. So what I did here was to try to give you something that meets the requirements of the statute but gets us so that we are compliant, and then let the policy committee slow down, review the policies. You have to get input from teachers, you have to get input from students. And by the way, the way that school districts did that is, school districts either, they did a couple of different things. One was, they sent out a form, like a survey, and said, if you'd like to give us any input on the cellphone ban, go ahead and do it. That's parent input. Other school districts encourage parents to come and speak at a meeting like this to give input. I actually don't really see the point of the parent input quite so much, maybe to talk about consequences, but this is already done. The ban is not debatable. The phones are banned. So the only thing that parents can really give input on is how we treat the student who inappropriately is using their phone. The school board model policy, if I'm not mistaken, had second occurrence taking the phone away. I want to be clear that our teachers are not going to be the cellphone police, and I want this to fall on administration, we're going to deal with this because the teachers need to teach.
Shane had his hand up, go ahead Shane.
Yeah, so just to kind of piggyback off what Brian was saying, there's a couple of things I just want to make sure the public is very aware of. It's a state law, it's out of our hands, we had to create a policy to do this, or we have to create a policy to do this, and this is like a temporary one that we'll have in place until we have a permanent one. It's bell-to-bell, which means we can't do anything about lunch, we can't do anything with study halls, we can't write in our policy, students will be able to use them at lunch because the state law says they can. So we can't supersede state law. Another important thing to remember is that this is another unfunded mandate. I learned tonight that New York State just passed a similar law, but they gave their schools a great deal of support in implementing it and guidance and things like that, which I'm not seeing here. I think the best we're going to do is we're going to have administrators kind of scrambling and trying to figure out how to navigate it. So I know that there's been, you know, where I work, there's been a lot of pushback about this and there's been a lot of disagreement. It's not the district, it's not the school, it's not the superintendent, it's not the school board, it's a state law and we are following the law by implementing this policy. So those are just some facts that I wanted to get out there because I know there's a lot of people who are frustrated and disappointed and this kind of thing, and I think it's great for the classroom, I think it's unrealistic when you think of real-life application of cellphone use, but that's my opinion and, you know, that's about it. So just wanted to have that information out there.
Thank you Shane. And it's not just cellphones, it's watches.
Watches, iPads, and any personal...
Laptops.
Yep, any personal device.
This is only K through 12, right?
Yes.
Correct. Sorry college people.
Personal devices include personal. All right, so this is, so we want to make a motion to waive, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Just a quick question. So I know some teachers use these devices in the classroom, so that's just nicks, no devices even with the teachers.
Correct.
So I guess, I hope we have enough support in the offices, I think the phones are going to be ringing more, I feel bad for our teachers and our admin that have to implement this, I think, I just hope we have enough support for everybody.
We'll figure it out. So we have phone lines available at the schools. There were two schools that we were adding a new phone so that students had access to a phone that they could use to call home, so I approved the installation of two lines for that. We'll figure it out, we'll figure it out, so...
Go ahead Shane.
Yeah, and I just wanted to also piggyback on something else Brian said, and I hope, I hope the rest of the board kind of feels the same way, is that I don't want this to disrupt learning, I don't want it to be the teachers butting heads with students or damaging relationships about this. You know, my unfortunate hope is that administration deals with these items and teachers can mostly go about their day and do what they're here to do, which is work with our kids and make relationships with our kids and teach our kids. So that was an important part for me too.
Yep, thank you Shane. All right, go ahead Laura.
Yeah, I just want to say, I think I'm excited about some of the positive effects of this, I think there will be challenges for sure, and that's, you know, definitely present. Also, I think that a lot of the harms and concerns fall outside of bell-to-bell, for example, like what kids are viewing on school buses and all of that, which are, there aren't eyes on those things right now, and that's a big concern as a parent, is school bus rooms and school buses and the lack of oversight there with kids and technology.
There was no phone when my kids went, you learned all the best stuff on the school bus.
All right, so you need us to make a motion to approve this policy and we're going to waive.
We're going to waive.
Go ahead Shane.
I'll make a motion, well, here we go, consistent with the emergency procedure process for policy adoption outlined in policy BGB, I move to waive the traditional policy development process and adopt temporary policy JICJ to ensure compliance with NHRSA 189:1 pertaining to unauthorized communication devices used by students in school.
Seconded by me.
Seconded by Jared. All right, any further discussion? All right, CNN, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Brady, yes, opposed, abstaining. All right, it's unanimous.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, so we already did...
Yep, we already did the schedule.
School, school board, so now overnight out-of-state field trips?
Yeah, so you should have a handout in your packets, this is the list of the known overnight or out-of-state field trip requests, so this is something that in the past, we've done these just as they came in, and now we're doing this as one batch that kind of codifies it for the year. So these are all of the known, expected out-of-state field trips and overnight trips.
Are any of these new?
None of these are new.
Go ahead Shane.
I love that we're doing this because I think we've talked about this and this might be the first time we're doing it, right?
Yes.
My question is, do any of the, say, April field trips have a monetary component to them from our end? Or do we know if they're all fundraised and from maybe student activities, things like that?
I don't believe any of these have a cost associated with it from a kind of a board perspective, so students pay individual fees and they contribute to the busing costs, but that's it.
Because again, my concern would be if we're on budget time, you have a field trip planned and slashed, and now we're saying, well, we approved this field trip and now we've got to scramble and find money for it. But looking at them, I think they're probably all either fundraised or students pay for them or...
Correct.
Student activity funds or something like that, yeah. Correct, thank you.
Thank you Shane. Anyone else, questions, comments, we'll need a motion, which is right here, if somebody wants to read it.
I'll read it.
Go ahead Reta.
I make a motion to approve the 2025, 26 GHS overnight or out-of-state field trips, potential out-of-state regular season football game and performing art trip to Boston, Mass for performance, show and schedule dependent.
All right, I need a second.
By Jack.
By Jack. Any further discussion? CNN, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Brady, yes, opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous. Do we have, do we have the teacher stuff, the schedule stuff?
These are the staffing sheets I'm sending around.
Okay.
So as those are making their way around, for notifications only, no action required of the board, we have a teacher change in FTE for Mrs. Wingfield at Glen Lake School. So we actually are going to have two nurses instead of one dedicated nurse, there are going to be two part-time nurses, slightly different model at Glen Lake School. We have a number of track changes, so congratulations to all of those teachers, they will receive a letter. We have long-term substitute and we have two student teachers. Mr. Derocher is doing an administrative internship with Mrs. McCann, so that's something that you guys should know about. And we also have Joshua Morissette doing an internship with Mrs. Engen.
Okay, all right, so moving on, let's do the teacher resignations as we want.
Okay, so for teacher resignations, we have one, two, three, four, five, six teachers.
Okay, any questions, comments, if not, a motion to accept their resignations?
Have they been replaced?
Yes. At this point, from a hiring perspective, we are one...
One short.
One short, which is pretty darn good.
Is it one of these resignations?
No, I don't think it's one of these.
No, it's a different one.
It's a high school teacher, right?
It is, correct.
Yeah, high school teacher.
Jared, you had your hand up, go ahead.
Yeah, just with the resignations, was this something that, these were known and have been known, or are these last minute?
No, some of these were unexpected and were very much unknown.
Are we going to potentially enforce a collective bargaining agreement on those items?
So there was one individual that I just released today to another school district who we found a replacement for, so at this point, they have all been released. There was one teacher, I won't say which one it was, but one teacher I had not released yet, and that happened today. So at this point, I think we're in pretty good shape.
Yep, okay, awesome.
Just for the board to know, I asked that question because in our collective bargaining agreement, if somebody has signed the contract and then they pull out of that contract, there's a cost to replace that individual. So whether it's the hiring, you know, making sure that we're spending time interviewing other people, we have the ability and the mechanism to recoup some of those costs that are taken. So that's why I asked that question for those board members that didn't know.
Right, thank you Jared, appreciate that. All right, so a motion to accept the resignations?
Make a motion to accept the resignations as presented.
Thank you Shane, do I have a second?
Second.
By Ginny, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Brady, yes, opposed, abstaining. Okay, we're unanimous. Teacher nominations.
Yeah, so the next batch is corresponding teacher nominations with some of those resignations.
Wow, you guys have been busy.
Yep.
I just had a quick question about the last name on the page, is that a former employee?
On page two?
Or is it a different?
Or is it a different? This is the same employee, so, yeah. So this is probably, this is probably worth just pointing out that Dr. McMurray, who was our dean of students here, we have hired him as a special ed teacher in one of our vacant special ed positions. Dr. McMurray is in fact a Swiss Army knife of public education. He can open a bottle for you, he can, he can cut a parachute line if you need to, he can do it all.
Full disclosure, I trust his special ed expertise, he was one of my cooperating practitioners when I was getting my special ed certification, so I trust his special ed expertise, so I would...
And among other things, he's also a school psychologist.
Unless anyone has any further comments, I'd make a motion to approve his teacher nominations.
All right, thank you Shane, do I have a second?
I'll second.
By Vanessa, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Brady, yes, opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous. All right, the next group.
Next one is student support specialists, this is our SSS category, and for this particular one, this is for a speech assistant position, which we don't have identified in our other collective bargaining agreements.
Okay, so I'll need a motion to accept the student support specialist?
So moved.
So moved. By Reta, second by Ginny, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Brady, yes, opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous. Next one?
The next batch, these are more for informational only, I think I had shared last year with the board that we're not required to do this, but I think it's important to identify staff members that we have on a one-year certificate of eligibility, so I wanted to codify this in some way. So we've done it through the staffing sheet, so although probably not necessary for you to make a motion, it would be absolutely fine if you did to just identify that we have three individuals as a one-year certificate of eligibility for this school year.
All right, somebody want to make a motion, or are you good with...
Motion to acknowledge the one-year certificate of eligibility individuals listed on our staffing sheet.
All right, motion by Jared, second by Ginny, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Brady, yes, opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous. All right, the next.
Okay, the next big batch is for co-curricular athletics. So you can see here, this is a ginormous list, people with an N next to them, those are new folks, and everyone else is a returning coach for us. And the T, there's a T, I think that's a transfer, so that must have meant that someone was coaching somewhere else, maybe in a different role, and transferred to that new position.
So I'll need a motion for the co-curricular sports nominations.
Make a motion to approve the co-curricular sports nominations as presented.
Thank you Shane, do I have a second?
I'll second.
By Caroline, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Brady, yes, opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous. All right, non-sports.
And lastly, we have co-curricular non-sports nominations, so these are all of our class advisors, these are some of our co-curriculars, lead teachers, et cetera.
All right, so I need a motion for the non-sports.
I'll make a motion to approve the co-curricular non-sports nominations as presented.
Thank you Shane. And Caroline, you second?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Brady, yes, opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous. Wow, thank you. All right, so is, all right, so we need the top three things, we need to start adding that to the end of our thing, top three.
Cellphone. Could I add something under new business?
Under new business, that was back before staffing.
Only other business.
Okay, yeah, let's do the top three first.
So we got cellphone, CISTERN project being done, is that...
Yeah, that's a big one.
It's not flashy, but it's really important.
Under budget is flashy.
And on time. I was thinking about...
On time, on budget.
For the project. No, I was thinking about the budget, the amount of money that's been given back.
How much money we're giving back, that should be number one, be the third.
Yeah, that's true, because that's a pretty big number.
And that'll directly impact people's December taxes.
Yep, at the select board's stats, we do not do that.
So Reta, you got cellphone, CISTERN, and then the money going back. I do the money going back as number one. All right, is that good? All right, so any other business, go ahead Ginny.
Okay, I know that there's a young man who's an Eagle Scout, who would like to work on a cross-country court, track for us, and we don't have a cross-country course right now. We used to have one, I don't know what happened to it. Cross-country is one of those sports, it's a no-cut sport, it's a co-ed sport. It's great because it's a long-term activity that people can do and can do for the rest of their life. I'm concerned about the equity in our sports in Goffstown, and I think the young gentleman is here, I thought he was going to be on the agenda tonight. And I know he really needs to get started on this project, and he has spoken to the cross-country coach about it and the cross-country team about it, and I would like to be able to find out more about that, and if he were to be allowed to give us like a couple of little things so that we could maybe go ahead on this tonight, so that they can move forward on this.
Do you want to speak to this?
Yeah, I, at this point, I don't see this as an action of the board, so the young man who happens to be right there...
Yes, he is.
Which we're very appreciative of his project, I shared with him as a runner, I myself want to get out and run on his course, so I'm in support of this. So we've spoken with the young man, and he has a meeting scheduled with Mr. Gross this week, along with the high school administration, so it's all moving forward.
Okay.
I think at this point, there's no action needed of the board, I shared that he's got my support and that we just need to figure out the logistics and no problem.
Okay, good.
Yep.
I think you...
Yeah, we just want to make sure that we keep him off the Villa land and that we have, the track is completely on our parcel of land, and then we'll work with him on, you know, the construction and all of it, but I think it's a great project. And we've been the beneficiary of other Eagle Scout projects, so when Mrs. Kohler was the principal at Mountain View, we had a couple of different ones, that we had students who built bridges in the woods, they did trails, they did maps, they did all kinds of work, so anything that gets people outside and gets people moving, full support from me.
And this is... And this is a whole lot of work, so if this young man wants to...
And fundraising, I mean, I don't even want to, you know, some of these Eagle Scout projects, they are donating thousands and thousands of dollars. So, I don't know that this particular one is going to have that kind of a price tag, but, you know, if you start building foot bridges and if he's got to bring equipment in, you know, next thing you know, it can kind of get expensive.
And this group of kids really deserve to have home meets and to be at their own school and to be able to enjoy...
So, I'm an opportunist, so I'll say, we don't have, we don't have a cross-country track, we don't have a 90-foot baseball diamond, so we have a varsity sport that we have no field for. So, we have needs in the town of Goffstown, a cross-country course is one of them, and the great thing about this is, it's inexpensive and achievable. So, this one, I think we can cross off the list. 90-foot baseball diamond is going to cost us over a million bucks, so that one, we're not going to cross off the list.
We're working on it still.
At least not yet.
All right, anything else, go ahead Caroline.
So, I think I saw somewhere about the planning board looking for a community response about the potential project going up behind the Shell Station. I think it is solved at this point because of an issue, if I'm reading it correctly, because there's an issue with the rail trail and it passing, there might be more to it than that. But, I didn't know where we landed as a board, if we provided a letter to the planning board. I know we spoke to the planning board about the school bus stop, but I didn't know if we wanted to use this as an opportunity to voice our concerns about the current state of our schools now with the people who are currently living in the community without new construction occurring, especially a project of that size. So, I think there might be a few different opportunities to express public's response and interest in the project or disinterest in the project, but I wanted to mention that.
All right, any thoughts, comments? Go ahead Jared.
As part of the presentation this board gave to the Select Board and Planning Board, we did talk about the impact of school-aged children from our calculations and what that would be. So, we did provide that information to them as well, but if we want to further advance that, I don't think it's going to be a bad thing.
Yeah, I think that this is not a unique opportunity, but they are putting out there, we, and I don't understand the full extent of the issue with the rail trail, but it's basically, there is an issue, it cannot move forward at this point, so they're looking for the public to weigh in on, like, what do you want the town to do here? So, I don't think the plan can move forward currently with the rail trail the way that it is, and it might just be if everybody's interested and wants this project and there's enough interest in it, that they will just sort of like bypass that and allow the project to continue, I'm not sure. But I think that, you know, yes, we provided that in the planning phase of the project, expressed our concern for it, but now there's sort of a second phase of this and issue that has come up, so they're looking for public feedback. At least that's what I think is happening.
Good cascading that, everybody.
All right, anything else? All right, we do not have non-public, we don't have non-public tonight, so the next meeting is September 8.
Does that sound right, Mrs. Horn?
All right, so I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, yes.
Caroline, second?
Ginny.
Ginny, second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Brady?
Yes.
Thank you for coming back tonight, enjoy your first day of school.